Darren Abbott didn't take the mail.
Yeah, but it got served.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Wareham Board of Selectmen's meeting of September 25th, 2018. Roll call?
Four selectmen present this evening. Mr. Scasiati is absent. Town Council and the town administrator are all present.
Kim, how would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcements?
Okay. Mary?
Nope.
Peter?
We have none.
You have one?
Go ahead.
Yes, next Thursday at 7:30 over in the Town Hall Auditorium, the redevelopment authority will be holding a workshop meeting regarding the Tremont Ale Factory overlay district proposal. Also, at the same time, Organa Brands, which is the marijuana products manufacturer that is proposing to use Tremont Ale, the steel building out there, to come in for their operations, will be doing their public outreach meeting, which is required by state law. So, the two things will be happening the same evening, at the same time. Again, 7:30 over in the Town Hall Auditorium. If you have any questions about this, please show up, because they will be answered.
I have none. There's none in the book, really? No, not a one.
Okay. Give me just a second. I think I have a couple that came in.
We have nothing.
Okay, we have from Bourne, the community blood drive next town to us. Cape Cod Healthcare will be holding a Bourne community blood drive next week at Market Basket, which I'm going to assume is the one over in Sandwich there, across the other side of the bridge. They asked us to basically post it and let people know about it. Also, there was an article on Route 6 and 28 in the newspaper, I think, at least on the blog section, yesterday or the day before. I just want to make a correction for everybody. In the article, it talks about Willen Cove and the state, as if the state has already spoke to them and has come up with some solutions for the actual highway information. It was incorrect. The person from DOT basically giving out the information misspoke about what actually is happening. The status as of right now, selectman Scasiati is here at 7:04. And what should have been written is, I'll read this just so people know, "Potential housing development proposed at the intersection of Redbrook Road and Cranberry Highway. If this development moves forward, it will be coordinated with the town of Wareham and Mass DOT and the developer to ensure the new traffic signal at the intersection operates efficiently." So, what that means is there has been no discussion about what, how, when, and where. It's strictly that if something does get approved, at that point there, there'll be some discussion done. But as of right now, there's no design to accommodate that area. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, citizens' comments? Anybody?
Ooh, a reprieve.
Wow.
Actually, we do.
We do?
Yeah, remember?
Oh, that's right. Oh, that's right. We're actually...
Pseudo-citizens.
Pseudo-citizens, yeah. Come on up.
Good evening. Joyce Bakayaki.
Kim Shaver-Hood.
So, thank you. We just wanted to take this opportunity to update you on the school building project. We will receive the estimates back on Monday and the estimators. There've been two estimators with the charges, charges and the cost. They put them together. We will receive that information at the building committee on Monday night. Then, we will have the approximate figure. The building committee then will make a decision and go forward. As well, we've been doing some videotaping with WCTV. It will be shown in the very near future. It will show the interior of Minnet, and it will also show the interior of Deacon, so people in the community could see the conditions of the buildings. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it. And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Very nice.
So, all I would add to that is that, as Kim said, when the final cost of the project is calculated, then after that, the cost to the taxpayer can be calculated. And we understand that that's a very important piece of information that everyone is waiting to have.
When do you want to be back on the agenda rather than this way?
How about if we let you know?
Okay, just, it's a lot easier if it's an actual agenda.
Okay, sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Has more impact. We'll get you in and out quickly. We won't make you wait.
Anyone else? Citizens' participation? Nope. Seeing none. Board comments?
I'm going to ask the board also if anybody has done anything at all with the individual projects that each one had. Tony? Mary?
I can't think of anything right now.
Okay, no trash.
Well, okay, you're going to get Peter first. No, okay, so, you know, they're still working on trying to work out the issue with the sewer rates and get them over to water rates. And it's been a complicated issue and it's had a lot of problems. And it isn't that now we've sort of come to a meeting of the minds with the two water departments. Now, we seem to be having a problem with Ty and Bond coming up with the plant. So, that's being worked out, and it's just taking so much time. I don't, yeah, no, it's getting to be problematic.
They couldn't build off the prior plan?
I have no idea, but I was talking to Jim the other day, last week, and he was saying that they're, they have been problematic and they've had some issues. And you would think that it should be just, well, and I said to Jim, why don't you just, you know, tell them, get it done, or get someone else? Simple as that. And he says, we're working on that. So, I just want you to know that, you know, every time you, every time we try to move forward in this thing, we seem to get a roadblock in one way or another. You know, without Ty and Bond's help, it ain't going to happen, because they got to set up the base rate in order to cover the costs of the plant, in order to be able to then add for the other stuff. It's so, and, and look, the guys can't do that themselves. That's going to require that kind of, that kind of organization, that kind, you know, an engineering firm to come up with those numbers. So, it's been a little bit of a problem for them. I think they're, they're still pushing ahead. They still want this to happen. Everybody wants it to happen. But it's just been, it just seems that every turn, we have an issue.
It's complicated. I can remember when we left off, right before we handed it over to the new sewer commissioners back in, what was it, 2014, 2015?
Yeah.
You know, one of the issues wasn't that Ty and Bond wasn't doing the work. It's just they had to wait for information to come to them in order to get...
From the water departments, yes.
But they also had to wait for information as well from the sewer department in order to do their work. So, you know, I think it's probably a case of getting everybody together in a room and hashing it out.
What they needed was two years supposedly of each year, each water department, in order to be able to start to understand how much the water is, in order to determine what sewer rates would be on the basis, right? So, they had, that's, they've obtained that now. They have all that information. But it's still not going as well as it should be. And I talked to Jim, and he seems to want to push it a little harder. So, I think they're going to have Ty and Bond in, and they're going to start to get on their case a little bit. Alan's looking at me like, yeah.
Just remember, when we turned it over, Ty and Bond had completed their part of the contract, so I'm sure there's a money issue involved.
There may be. There may be. Money might have something to do with it as well.
So, you know.
The other thing I wanted to talk about was, the building folks were just here, and it's a very big day for everybody on Monday to actually come up with actual numbers. And I want to stress to everybody again, because I keep hearing this out in the thing, well, how come we didn't look at remodeling? And I want to stress to everybody so they understand that that is a requirement of SBA. You have to look at remodeling. You have to go through the exercise, and they have to approve what you put together, and then they have to decide what you're going to do. Because they could simply say, you know what, the remodeling costs are going to be fine here. You're going to remodel. They could have said that. But they didn't. The end result, they went through the school, we went through the remodeling exercise, all of that was done. And if anybody wants to see that information, please don't be afraid to ask for it. We'll be happy to give it to you. Because it's a rather lengthy document, you know, it takes quite a lot of work to put together to come up with a remodeling plan. But the remodeling plans were done, and they were not chosen for obvious reasons. And if you saw the remodeling numbers, you'd, you'd know right away. It's always more expensive to remodel than it is to just tear a building down or rebuild it. In the case of a school, and the reason for that is, it's like if you take your house down, you rebuild it, probably not so much. But in the case of a school, the problem you have is all the codes that you need to come up to for schools. School codes grow like, you know, keep going into the stratosphere. So, all those codes you need to come up to make it almost impossible to get the new, the old building to those codes. They really do. It makes it almost impossible. So, that's one of the reasons. So, I just want everybody to still be aware that that exercise was done, and if you want the information on that, we'll be glad to get it to you. Okay? That's it for me.
And also, at the end of the day, we don't make the decision. MSBA takes the three different versions of what they can do. It also includes expansion.
Yep.
And they make the choice. The town of Wareham does not make the choice of how the school is done. Okay.
And since they're paying for a healthy chunk of it, 75%, they have the right to do that.
They also pay the higher percentage for a new school from scratch rather than a remodel.
Yes, they do.
It's a quarter of the difference. Do you have anything? Okay.
What, on projects?
Yeah.
Just came out of one of the projects meetings tonight, redevelopment authority. We're making progress there. The onset slum and blight study, unfortunately named, but that's what the feds makers call it. That's been, we just received that today in draft form. So, we're making progress there. Once that and the Wareham slum and blight study are completed and approved, what we will do is then put together a redevelopment plan. And that will be something that gets brought up. We're actually in the process of figuring out who approves exactly what here. My understanding is, and maybe town council is listening in, the selectmen actually approve a redevelopment plan, but if you have any zoning components that go along with it, it has to go to town meeting for their approval. So, that's kind of, that was my understanding with it. I just got a nod from him, so I guess that answers that question. So, we would be looking to come up with a redevelopment plan probably early part of next year. And then, from there, should any zoning be requested, it would probably go to the spring town meeting. So, we're making progress on that. And my other project, of course, is Tremont Ale Factory, which is now part of the redevelopment authority's purview to try to manage. As I said, we have the aforementioned public meeting, workshop meeting, next Thursday on the 4th, 7:30. There's also been some additional interest in using the facility, and hopefully I can talk about that soon.
You know, one other thing, I heard, and I, just for everybody's knowledge, I just, I heard the other day, and from a very good source, that Haber Freyda signed a lease to go into Bennys, which is really nice. I mean, that, I was worried about that building. Really worried about that building. So, that's really good, you know?
All set?
Yep, I'm good. Yep. You're on.
I'm on. The only thing we have that I'm doing right now, besides the usual small stuff, is the commuter rail. We're still battling back and forth with that. We've decided to go ahead and do what we call Plan A and a Plan B, as far as where the train station would be. Plan A, obviously, is the downtown and using the land and the area there to have a station there, since the state spent about $200,000 to make an actual station for the Cape Flyer. But at the same time, we've also taken where the Deacon School is, and we've done some work down there with a proposal of possibly a public safety complex, mixed use, and a train station in that location as well, which comes right off the highway, which is a Plan B. We've used SERPED with their drones, which I'm sure the police have had phone calls about drones flying all over town. And we have everything all laid out. We have pictures, and we have almost like a movie of a Plan A and a Plan B. And we'll be submitting that to our state representative to bring to Mass DOT to show where we're at and what we can do for them as far as commuter rail. This will give us basically a piece that if they decide to pull the trigger on our section of the rail, it's basically ready to go, and it's all laid out for them. It's important to have something there and to have two choices just to make it work. So, I just want to give everybody a heads up that we're just not sitting waiting. We're trying to be very proactive on this. That's all I have.
I have one question, Alan, for you.
Sure.
So, I had, I had heard that, if I remember right, that September, they were going to send out the bids for the, for the highway project, the 6 and 28 project. Have they gone out yet?
Yeah, the newspaper already mentioned over it. The bids went out, as they said, on September 22nd.
Okay.
They're in the newspaper. They're done. There was, as I mentioned, there was a little misquote from Mass DOT about the Redbrook project part of it, which I just corrected a little while ago.
Okay.
So, it's, I believe the date's going to be March of 2019. They'll call the businesses in on the road. They'll have layouts of how they're going to close the road in sections, but nothing will get blocked off. Traffic will always be able to flow.
Right.
And they'll have a whole layout of how it's going to happen.
Yeah, I heard that they had taken a lot of our suggestions, which was good.
Yeah.
To keep the road moving and make sure that they weren't at the peak times.
I've told them that they still got on the sidewalks, not us.
Well, it was interesting, you know, one of the things, if you remember, right after we mentioned that to them, they right away put some counters out there during the summer, if you remember. Right away, they didn't fool around. They put the counters out there to get counts during the summer to see what, when they're most traveled. So, that was pretty good.
Yeah. I think it's also important for everybody to understand, in the release, they very were specific about talking about the road and the issues with flooding over by the 99 etc.
Yeah, that would be really nice.
They made it real clear that they were going to fix that once and for all. And there's actually two areas that flood. So, that's part of the construction project as well.
Awesome.
And I think the figure now is $19.9 million.
Okay. All right, the application for ACAP Inc., DBA, Wines &amp; More, Wareham, for a change of manager. Is anybody here? Excuse me? Do I have a 715 hearing here?
Yeah, we do.
I do, okay. You want to do that neck first?
What?
We don't have to do it. We can do the, you want to do the hearing now?
He's here. Just to take a minute.
Let's do, because this should take 10, 10 seconds. So, let's do it. Okay.
No samples.
Sit on down. So, are you Mr. Kane?
I am.
Okay, so, you're the new manager, Evan?
Yes.
C. Kane.
Yep.
Okay, I've got all the paperwork. He, the Cory's here. Everything's here. So, they're asking us to change and make him the new manager. Any questions?
I just, someone mentioned to me today, you did a presentation, I think, MEED?
Yeah, yeah, we just had a MEED seminar last Thursday. We had the girls from Crave Mutary out in Blackstone. They came down and did it for us, and we had a pretty good turnout.
Should contact the newspapers to get a little publicity for people to come.
Yeah, yeah, it's a good idea.
They're both here.
They might like me, too.
He goes back to about 1 B.C.
Oh.
Go ahead.
Going into that. Okay. All right, so, I move that we approve the change of manager for ACAP Inc., DBA, Wines &amp; More. That's it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstained, 5-0-0. Pick up paperwork tomorrow at the office if you'd like.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right. We have a show cause hearing for Baypoint LLC, DBA Baypoint Club, for a liquor violation of Chapter 138, Section 64, to wit a violation of, of serving an underage drinker. I move that we open the public hearing.
Second.
Tony?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Alan, yes. Need the police officers to come up to, please? Everybody will stand when they all get up here. Rich will swear everybody in. I'll swear, Alan, whatever it is.
That's our job.
That's our job?
Yeah.
Didn't know that.
Do you swear to tell the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. May be seen.
Okay. Same as before, go ahead.
Good evening.
Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you. On August 9th, 2018, approximately 3:30, myself and Detective Baptiste and two 19-year-old underage agents met at the Wareham Police Station to conduct a briefing prior to conducting an alcohol compliance check of all pouring establishments in the town of Wareham. The underage agent, agents were instructed to enter the store and attempt to order a beer. If the beer was served to the underage agents, one of the underage agents would call me and notify me of the same. Detective Baptiste would then enter the store and identify by license and photograph the clerk that sold the alcohol to the underage agents. Detective Baptiste would then pay for the beer with funds from Wareham Police Department and obtain a receipt for the alcohol served. Should be noted that both of the underage agents were issued a portable breath test pre and post the compliance check. Both results were zeros. The underage agents did not have any identification on him/her during the time of the alcohol compliance check. At approximately 6:38 PM, Baypoint Club was checked at 19 Baypoint Drive in onset, and a sale was made. The clerk was identified as Amanda Wigmore by Detective Baptiste. Detective Baptiste paid for the alcohol that was served, and a receipt was obtained. It should be noted at this above establishment, both of the underage agents were served alcohol. Because of this, there was two separate issues of selling alcohol to a person under the age of 21.
On August 9th, 2018, at approximately $1,600, I assisted Detective Riley with alcohol compliance check of all liquor pouring establishments in the town of Wareham. Detective Riley, using 19-year-old male agent, 19-year-old female agent entered establishments and attempted to purchase alcohol. I was in a separate unmarked vehicle, observed both agents entered the establishments. Detective Riley advised the agents to order the alcohol beverage, and if they were served, they would contact him via cell phone. He would, in turn, contact me. I would enter the establishment. Once I observed the underage agents with the alcoholic beverage in front of them, I would return, they would return to Detective Riley, who was in an unmarked vehicle in the parking lot, first establishment, excuse me. Second establishment to sell alcoholic beverages to the underage agents was Baypoint Country Club, 19 Baypoint Drive onset. I entered establishment, breathed both agents seated at the bar. Once they observed me, they got off the bar stools, exited establishment. As the male agent walked to me, he stated that the bartender that had served them had walked away from the bar and went outside. He then pointed it out to me as they left the establishment. In return, Detective Riley, I approached this female, informed that she had just served alcohol to two underage minors. The bartender stated to me that she was sorry. I asked her for identification. She gave me his master driver's license, identified herself as Amanda Wigmore, date of birth 4/4/77. I took the photo, I took a photo of Miss Wigmore along with alcohol that was served to the agents. I paid for the alcohol that was served to the agents and received the receipt.
Quick question, Kyle. Was this at the, at the golf club or at the?
Clubhouse.
Clubhouse, not at the?
Not at the function hall.
I apologize. I should have done more due diligence. I didn't know if we have one license that covers the whole... Tim, do we have one licenses? So, this license, so this license is strictly for at the golf course itself piece?
Correct.
Okay, that's what we'll make sure of.
Can I ask one question? So...
I was going to go down the line and ask.
All right, okay, go ahead.
Tony, any questions?
That's for the, that license is for the entire golf course?
There are two separate license. My name is Tim Fay. I'm the owner of the Baypoint Club.
Sorry, Tim.
There is a license for the golf clubhouse operation and golf course, and there is a license for the pavilion function facility. There are two separate licenses.
Okay.
Mary?
So, both, there were two individuals you sent in, were both served a beer? Or was only one served?
Both, sir.
So, they were both served. Okay, thank you.
I'm here this evening...
By the same individual, too, right?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm here this evening to accept full responsibility and applaud the Wareham Police effort for discovering these types of issues and problems. The, the effort at the Baypoint Club over the past five years since we acquired it has been seriously designed to encourage youth golf and family activities, and this, this is very upsetting to the ownership and management of Baypoint. So, we applaud your efforts. I'm here to accept responsibility for it. The employee that did this was a probationary new employee. She had been with us for 35 days. We constantly enforce at every staff meeting, at every opportunity, the importance of not serving underage people. We, we encourage underage activity at the golf course. We're certainly not going to serve them alcohol. So, I am here to accept responsibility and, and tell you that it's an important issue to us, and we applaud the efforts of the police department for doing what they're doing.
Thank you. Tony, any questions?
No, I'm all set.
Mary?
What have you done in the meantime to make sure that this isn't going to happen again?
So, we have regular staff meetings reinforced at every staff meeting. We have daily schedules and instructions at the bottom of each of those. We reinforce that. We, at every opportunity, reinforce the importance of checking IDs. Our operation is, it's a little different than a retail operation. There is a regular group of people that come and play golf at our golf club, and we reinforce at, at every staff meeting the importance of checking these IDs.
That was the question I had.
Yeah, have you thought about just carding everybody?
So, because it's a regular, it's a regular clientele, our golfing community is an older clientele. So, we have not thought about carding everyone. We've got a new expression that one of our people came up with. If, if, I think it's no wrinkles, card them, right? So, most of our...
It might work.
Right. So, I think he carded a 38-year-old, and she was very happy with that. So, we have a regular clientele that's a little older, and carding that same group daily would be a little cumbersome.
Okay. That's fine. All right.
I'm not going, I'm fine.
Is that it?
Yeah.
So, I move we close the public hearing.
Tony?
Second.
Mary?
Yes.
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 Okay, deliberations.
Well, we've had a pretty consistent policy of two-day alcohol license suspensions through the liquor store.
October 2nd and 3rd is what we've been using.
Yeah, October 2nd and 3rd.
Tuesday, Wednesday.
Try to do it midweek, so it's not as impactful on the first offense. Second offenses, as people who saw recently, will garner a much more significant punishment. But...
And you have to post a sign as well. They'll give you a thing you got to...
But I would, I would recommend we keep with that practice going forward.
Tony?
Yes.
Mary?
I agree.
Patrick?
Yeah. I move we close the Baypoint Club for October 2nd and 3rd, and that they're required to post a sign accordingly.
You still run your, run the golf course? It's just you can't serve liquor?
You just can't serve any liquor.
Can't serve any liquor. You...
At that location.
Food is fine?
Food is fine.
Food is fine. It's not, it's not an offense under any common vic regulations.
Oh, yeah.
We're looking at the 2nd and the 3rd?
Yes.
Just as a technical note, Mr. Fay would have five days from the date that he got the decision letter to take an appeal to the ABCC. So...
Move it back a week?
Well...
Wait a minute. Let's, will you accept that?
I'm here this evening to accept without dispute your account of what happened and to accept the recommendation of this board. There won't be an appeal.
All right. Here we go.
Okay, just wanted to make sure everything was...
Good catch. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you also, Tim.
Do you have a motion in a second?
Any other questions on board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstained, 5-0-0. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We hope we never see you again on this.
Yep.
Me, too.
All right, next up...
And thank you, detectives.
Is a hearing for Sienna Cafe LLC, DBA American Cafe, for a violation of... Is a hearing for Siena Cafe LLC DBA American Cafe for a violation of chapter 13864 to wit, serving a minor. I move that we open the public hearing.
Second.
Tony?
Yes.
Mary? Patrick?
Yes.
Yes.
Swear everybody in?
We're waiting for town council to go at it again.
Swear the whole truth of all...
Truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you, may be seated.
On August 9th, 2018, at approximately 3:30 PM, myself and Detective Baptiste and two 19-year-old underage agents met at the Wareham Police Station to conduct a briefing prior to conducting an alcohol compliance check of all of the liquor pouring establishments in Wareham. The underage agents were instructed to enter the store and attempt to order a beer. If the beer was served to the underage agents, one of the underage agents would call me and notify me of the same. Detective Baptiste would then enter the store and identify by license and photograph the clerk that sold the alcohol to the underage agent. Detective Baptiste would then pay for the beer with funds from the Wareham Police Department and obtain a receipt for the alcohol served. Should be noted that both underage agents were issued a portable breath test pre and post the alcohol compliance check with results of zero. The underage agents did not have any identification on him or her during the time of the alcohol compliance checks. At approximately 5:32 PM, Americana Cafe was checked at 208 Rear Main Street. Sale was made to the underage agents, and the clerk was identified as Karen Moore by Detective Baptiste. Detective Baptiste paid for the alcohol that was served. A receipt was provided to Detective Baptiste for the alcohol. The receipt was assigned to property number and secured as evidence. Should be noted that both of the underage agents were served alcohol. Because of this, there are two separate incidents of serving alcohol to a person under the age of 21.
August 9th, 2018, approximately $1,600, I assisted Detective Riley, alcohol compliance check of all liquor pouring establishments in the town of Wareham. Detective Riley, using 19-year-old agents, male and a female, entered establishment, attempted to purchase alcohol. I was in a separate unmarked vehicle, observed both underage agents enter the establishment. Detective Riley advised the agents to order an alcoholic beverage, and if they were served, they would contact him via cell, and he would contact me. I would then enter the establishment, and once I observed the underage agents with the alcoholic beverage in front of them, I would return Detective Riley, who was in, they would return Detective Riley in a unmarked vehicle in the parking lot. First establishment to sell alcoholic beverage to the underage agent was Americana Cafe, 208 Main Street. I entered the establishment, observed both agents seated at the table. As the agents seen me approach, they both exited establishment. I approached the server, informed her that she had just served alcohol to two minor underage minors. Asked for identification, she gave me a Delaware driver's license, identifying herself as Karen Moore, 9/28/71, in the Nager side of Dover, Delaware. I took a photo of Miss Moore along with alcohol, the alcohol that was served. Also paid for the alcohol that was served to the underage agents, received the receipt.
Questions? Mary?
Uh, no.
None.
No, I think it's the same as the last one. You're up.
Well, I'm not disputing it. Obviously, it happened, so I take full responsibility for it. I'm checking every single ID that there is. I don't care if they're 50, 60, 70 years old. I'm checking every single ID. I have, I did do the tips training certification again. I do have another employee that works on Friday and Saturday nights. She's taken the same precaution. She actually did get certified last week as well. And again, I am deeply sorry, and every, I assure you, every ID is checked.
So you admit to the facts. Okay, thank you.
Question, if we do the same dates, will you appeal or not? Because if you're gonna appeal, we'll move the dates back.
No, I will not.
I'll take a motion, please.
Just before, it should also be noted that there is a sign.
Sorry.
No, I'm just, I want this part of the hearing record. There is a sign now on the other side saying they check every ID.
Thank you.
They posted that. She omitted to mention that, but they've taken that precaution as well.
Need a motion.
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Tony.
I move that we suspend the license of Siena Cafe LLC DBA American Cafe for October 2nd and 3rd, and that they're required to post the appropriate signage.
Motion by Patrick, second by Tony. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, 5-0-0.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We'll send a letter at this position of the board.
Yep.
Thank you very much, the police department, for their work.
Yes.
It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you detectives and undercover agents.
Next up is a dog hearing. I move that we, well, let's get everybody up here. All the people relevant to the dog hearing for Darren Abbott, 115 High Street, Wareham, Mass. Please come forward, all that are gonna testify, and I move we open the public hearing.
Yes, I can. Tony?
Yes. Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yep, yes.
Okay.
Good question before we start. Is the, is the dog not here?
He is here. That's Darren right there.
Yes, right here, sir.
That's why I asked. Thank you.
He didn't get the letter, but, so we were worried you weren't gonna make it. Okay, on August 10th, 2018, approximately 3:00 PM...
He was served in hand. He was served in hand, right?
Yeah, second time, yes.
Yeah, he was served by the police.
I got the first one, too. Be more than welcome to come.
He can read it first, then swerve it.
Typically, that's what we've been doing. At approximately 3:00 PM, a dog described as a tri-colored male beagle named Scout, while tethered in the backyard of his owner's property at 115 High Street, broke free of the tether and left the property. The dog then ran after several children playing in the area, and the dog bit one of the children unprovoked, resulting in injury requiring medical treatment. The bite did not occur on the dog owner's property. That's the complaint. Now, can you swear everybody in?
Would everyone who intends to testify, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you, you may be seated.
Okay, Sheriff, you're up.
Well, as you've already read, we're here today because the dog owned by this gentleman broke free from his tether, and it resulted in injury to this young man. I wasn't there, I wasn't the responding officer, so they can tell you more about what happened on that day.
So Michael was outside playing tag with my six-year-old granddaughter.
Sorry, Peter's right. Please let us know who you are.
Oh, I'm Valerie Bergeron. I am Michael Enos's guardian.
That's fine, thank you. Just for the records.
Thank you. So they were outside playing tag and running around, and the dog broke free, and, you know, it ran after the kids, and it didn't appear that the dog was trying to be vicious, but Michael, you know, the dog's coming at you, he got a little, you know, afraid and screamed, and the dog jumped up and bit him in his buttocks.
Perry only does it on her own property.
Sorry.
Private joke.
Private joke.
I have three dogs myself, so...
That's it? Okay, anything else, Sheriff?
Well, he's the dog owner, so he can tell you his side of the story.
I do have a question.
I haven't got the, go ahead.
From Mrs. Bergeron. What was the result of the dog bite? What medical treatment was required?
Michael had to be taken to the hospital by ambulance. He had to be put on antibiotics and followed up with his pediatrician. He did have a tetanus shot, so he didn't need to have anymore.
Were stitches required for the wounds, or were they just to be kept clean?
Nope, it was to be kept clean.
Okay, so no significant tearing or anything, just...
Just like puncture wounds.
Couple of nice puncture wounds. Okay. What did you think about it?
I think the dog should not be taken. I think it was trying to play around with me, but I think I scared it a little bit.
Fair enough.
Very nice. Tony? That's pretty nice.
Yeah.
Yep, they say. I might not be so pleasant if I got bitten the butt.
Yeah, no. Nice, you know, there's honesty at its best, you know? Kids, out of the mouth of kids always come honesty.
I have one thing.
Go ahead, Tony.
What type of tether did the dog have? Was it a rope? Type tether or...
He was, he was on a leash. He actually broke his collar.
Oh, he broke the collar?
And I ended up getting him a new one, yes.
Because it sounded to me like he broke the leash.
No, he broke the collar that was on the leash.
Okay.
Yeah.
He's gotta speak his side, then I'll ask the others.
You can explain what happened.
I had him, I had him tied up, and I came out, I mean, a couple minutes later, and I heard yelling and screaming, so I came out and so forth. I really can't say what happened because I wasn't there, but the dog, they're around kids 24/10. I mean, in the cage, on the leash, I mean, I can't explain it. There's no excuse. I'm not making an excuse or anything, but the dogs always surround kids. You could, I could have him here now, he'd sit, and I just can't explain what happened. I mean...
Is your yard fenced in?
No, it's not fenced in.
So the dog can run around loose?
He, if he gets off, if he gets off.
So he's just on a tether?
That's pretty, it's pretty rare. I mean, I'm constantly, they used to walk out with me. Scout used to walk out with me every now and then. I mean, long as I'm right beside him, but when my brother takes him out and so forth, I, he's gotta put him on a leash and so forth, but he's, he's never, he's on a leash all the time.
How old is the dog?
What's that?
How old is the dog? I wanted to be at him.
Three years old.
Two?
Three.
Three, okay.
Tony, any questions?
Just turned three.
No, I'm all set.
Mary, any questions?
Um, I don't think so.
It's a beagle?
Yes.
What's he weigh?
What's that?
How much does he weigh?
30 pounds.
That's about right.
Yeah.
Patrick?
Yeah, no, I, there's nothing really else to ask. I mean, he did bite him, and he's gonna have to...
Sheriff, what are your recommendations?
Well, my recommendations are that the dog be deemed dangerous because he did inflict injury unprovoked to a human being, who resulted in having to go to the hospital and multiple puncture wounds. So I'm not looking to take the dog. I'm looking to have the dog deemed dangerous and that the dog be confined outdoors in a securely enclosed pen with a locked door, because kids, a lot of kids are in that area. I don't want the dog tethered. Broke the leash once, I don't want to see another person get injured, and I would also like the dog walked only by an adult and to be wearing a muzzle so that we don't have something like this happen again.
Tony?
When you say want him muzzled all the time?
When it's being walked off the property, not while it's in the pen.
Okay.
Mary?
I have no questions.
Those seem like reasonable precautions. What do you recommend for the enclosure?
Well, certainly would be an enclosure that's secure enough that the dog can't get out. I'd have to assess the dog. If he can climb, it'd be, you know, standard six-foot-high chain link dog pen would be sufficient with a solid floor so the dog can't dig out.
What if the gentleman wished a fence in his yard?
Again, a fence that would be sufficient for the dog not to be able to escape.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, although I know Darren's yard, and I'm not sure that you'd wanna fence the whole thing, but a pen certainly seems reasonable.
I, I do have a pen for him. There is a pen back there.
Okay, so a pen, and a pen certainly seems reasonable, you know, is whether, you know, whether the dog, you know, the problem with these things are is the dogs could be very, very nice and all the time and play with kids, but just, you know, dogs are dogs, and something can happen. And so when these things kinda happen, you know, it kinda ties our hands, because if we don't do something, you know what can happen? If it happened again, you know, shame on us. So we're gonna, I, I think that's a good requirement, either keep it penned and that it's muzzled while you're walking it. I mean, it's pretty simple.
I would like to say this. I have actually seen the pen that he has on the property, and I'm comfortable with the pen that he has at the time. I just don't want this dog tethered in the future.
All right. I move we close the public hearing.
Tony, yes?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
All right.
You wanna show, give us the conditions?
I got them.
I have a copy.
Yeah, just...
Oh, want me to read that into the record?
She always does this nice for us. All right. So I, I move that when the dog is, when the dog is outdoors, must be confined in a securely, secure enclosure and a locked dog pen. The dog is not to be tethered at any time. When the dog is removed from the premises, the owner, the owner, and by the way, they must be 18 years of age to walk the dog, right? Because that's a typical thing. The dog shall be securely and humanely muzzled and restrained with a chain or a tethered device, not to exceed three feet in length. That the dog only be walked by an adult 18 years of age or older. I'm gonna make this part of the record, okay?
Yep. Is that your motion?
Yes.
Need a second?
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Tony. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, abstain, 5-0-0. You get a copy of this position also.
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much, and appreciate everybody.
I'd like to thank the complainants for being very reasonable.
Extremely.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Thanks. It was the easiest one yet.
Yeah.
All right. Next up is an application of Plymouth Rock Wine LLC DBA Plymouth Bay Wineries for two one-day liquor licenses. Harvest, Cranberry Harvest. Yep. Okay, so one is for October 6th, 2018, and the other one for October 7th, 2018, from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and I move that we approve it. It's all here, and, and everything that we need is here.
Have a motion, need a second? Any questions on the board? None heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, abstain, 5-0-0.
Okay, next up is U First Auto Sales. Hafif Alba. Alba, is that how you say it?
Elbaba.
Elbaba?
Not Elbaba.
DBA U First Auto Sales LLC, 370 Cranberry Highway East, Wareham, Mass., for an amusement license to his, for amusement, or how about an amendment to his current Class II license. Now, just for the board's information, we had originally given him a 50-car license, which was on the premises before, and which the premises, in my opinion, is plenty big for. But we ended up reducing it back to 25, when the zoning board had only given him 25. He went back in front of the zoning board since. They've upped it to 50, and so they're asking us to just increase it to 50 cars.
There's also a layout there?
Yes, there is.
Yeah, that was all part of my package.
It's right here. I don't know if anybody's looking at it, but it shows all of, all spaces.
Yeah, that was, that was sent out by email. We saw it.
And so on, so...
If I can see, I have one question. Customer parking. If you wanna come over here, I'll show you my concern only. It's, it's a tight lot for 50. You know, it's, it's spread way out. You have, right now, you're showing customers faces here.
Yes.
Right now, you have, you know, used cars all across here.
Yeah.
You have used cars everywhere, so my question is, when you get the license for the 50, you gonna have to remove some of the cars off the spot?
Yeah, but here, it's empty. You know, I don't have any cars here.
Oh, you had cars through here and some here.
Yes, here, here only, but, till here, but from here to here...
I understand, so my question is...
Yes, that's right. You're gonna move it.
Okay, just to make sure you understand, you have to move that. Okay, I have no...
Just, one of the things that we, we've been having with these, some of the car licenses is the number of cars. I noticed we gave a license out across the street from him not too long ago.
They'll be coming before.
Supposed to be nine cars, and it's way more than nine cars.
They're processing cars through there and anything else, but they've been notified.
Okay, so we need to make sure that we kinda get on top of that a little, which, and you need to keep within your 50 cars as well, okay?
Absolutely.
All right, so I move that we approve the 50-car license for U First Auto Sales LLC, 3070 Cranberry Highway East, Wareham, Mass.
Need a second?
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Tony. Any questions on the board? None heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, abstain, 5-0-0. Pick up your license tomorrow.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, before we get to that, you have, we have no information on this at all. Authorize the chair to sign the MS4 NOAA EPA stormwater permit.
I went through the paperwork ahead of time with Ken Buckland. It's a standard procedure that we do, just to qualify for what we have to do.
Well, but remember, the last time we voted against it.
Yeah, we have no choice now. This is federal.
That was a couple of years ago.
We did, we voted against it, remember? We did, we voted against it, remember?
Yeah, we said fines, 1,500 bucks rather than what?
Actually, I said they could put me in jail before I paid for it.
Well, we were against it before we were for it. We were against it, that's correct. I'm still against it, I just want to make a point, if I can.
By principle, we should be, because it's what I call an unfunded mandate.
It is.
Unfortunately, we've already done the work and data, so if we sign this, we basically get some money back and stuff.
Okay, but the, the principle here is that these unfunded mandates are putting a, a big burden and a toll on the town, in my opinion.
This is a federal mandate.
And when we, well, and you know what? And the federal government's already proved, and things have just come recently, that it proved that they can't take our money away, i.e. just what happened with the immigration issue, when they tried to take their money away from some of these sanctuary cities, the court said, no, 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 you can't do that. So, you know, the only way they can get money from us is to take it away from us, because there's no other way. We, we're not going to pay it, so go ahead and take it away if you want, but they can't, because the courts, I think, have already come down on this in recent times, that, you know, that's not a good threat to use, because guess what? It doesn't work, and they're not going to accept it. So, if that's the case, then we've got cover on these things, and we got to start pushing back, I'm telling you, we got to start pushing back. We have 6,000 catch basins. According to the plan, we're supposed to clean them twice a year.
Twenty-five percent every year.
Twice a year. That's, what did we figure? I remember the last number you had was about 400 grand, if we hired an outside concern to come in and clean them, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, I don't, I think that was the estimate at the, at the time.
Yeah, $400,000 push in your face. Now, you know, the other way is to accept this and just do what we can do. You know what I mean? And if they don't like it, too bad, you know what I mean? We'll just do what we can do. We've been doing what we can do anyway. It's not like we have completely ignored them, you know?
I, if Mr. Chairman may allow, I've had a thought for our MMA leader.
Yes.
And I may put him on the spot. The, and this doesn't really help in the long run, but it does, the recommendation should be the release of the other 100 million to the communities to cover the cost of MS4.
There, there are some bills sitting up there with Governor Baker, et cetera, to actually, cities and towns can apply for some money back on this. The problem is you have also your NOAA and EPA stormwater permits, and at the end of the day, they can do a lot of seriously things if we are discharging water through our stormwater basins into the water supply. So, even though you think they can't get to us, they can, so in this particular case, we really have to follow through it, and we're working on other ways to try and get reimbursed.
See, I, I.
It's more, it's more than just the MS4.
But you know, I hear about this all the time, and I'm sick and tired of listening to it, because everybody tells me, oh, we got no choice, we got to do it, we got no choice, we got no choice. I'm tired of the no choice. I'm tired of no choice. It's about time we push back at these people. Enough is enough. I mean, you know, how much more money are we going to have to spend out of a budget that we don't have before we finally say enough? You know, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm going to vote against this because I just don't see any reason in the world to let them throw another unfunded mandate at us, I'm sorry.
I sense Patrick bringing articles of secession to the next town meeting.
Yeah, you got them. Can we get a few more towns to go with us?
So, is Dow Road going to become a separate entity?
Separate country.
Separate country.
Yeah, this is federal, we got to get away from the feds.
We got our own little country.
You're going to have to make a toll to get back on the highway, on the road from here.
Well, you know what, it's a toll to get here, too.
Hey.
That's nice, right?
All right, well. You know, don't forget, we've got a lot of miles of beach. Everybody wants to come here, you know, especially in the summer.
Okay, you know, this is your turn. I did it three, two or three years ago.
I know you did.
I voted against it.
I know you did.
It was out of principle, but.
Well, it's out of principle for me, too, I mean, I'm just tired of it.
It's just unfortunate, because NOAA and EPA are part of this whole thing, I have no choice.
I, you know, I hear what you're saying.
We end up losing grants that we can't afford to lose. Any other questions from the board?
We have a motion?
Not for me, you don't.
No, I haven't got the, yeah. Need a motion now.
Move to authorize.
Need a second? I'll second it since we're, they're, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Four in favor, Patrick against.
There we go.
There you go, the secessionist.
So.
Silent will become Fort Sumter.
I expect you to write a complaint to the state.
Absolutely, I don't have a problem with it. If you want, I'll absolutely do that. It's time, you know?
I know.
I did it, I did it once before. Of course, they didn't answer it. I did it once before.
If you write something, I'll give it to the Mass Municipal Association.
Okay, I'll write it.
Seriously.
I'll write it and I'll get it to you.
Oh, boy.
Mine was begrudging yay.
What?
Mine was a begrudging yay.
Begrudging yay? All right, next up is discussion and vote on whether to recommend and not to recommend articles. I think we did all but a few of these last week. I'm just not sure that we're still ready for these.
Mr. Sullivan, are we ready on any of the ones yet?
No.
I think you're waiting on.
Capital, free cash, unpaid bills.
Those are seven.
Those are the ones that are missing.
Those are still outstanding for.
Oh, wasn't one of the.
We won't have, we won't have free cash, or the capital planning isn't meeting till October 11th. I probably wouldn't have free cash till, I think, the Thursday of that week, which I can't.
How about the overlay district? Did you guys vote on that?
No, we're actually, that's what, part of what the process is going forward.
So, we got nothing to do?
Yeah.
Here they are, right here, see, these are the ones that we're supposed to do.
I wasn't here because of the holiday.
I know you weren't. Other than that, we voted on everything. If there's something, something you want us to change, you can, we'll be glad to allow you to weigh in.
No, I, you read everything I have, I assume, so therefore it's fine.
Yeah, we did. Just one question for the town administrator. What's the new print deadline, since we're doing it in the house now?
We moved it back a week, I believe.
No, it's a lot more than a week, because it was supposed to be in three days.
Yeah, they said they're going to add one week from the date they had. Kelly, yesterday said they were pushing it back another four weeks to print.
I, I think, it has to go by whatever the bylaw is. What is it, a week out from town meeting, you need to have it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, something like that, but they were.
So, the 15th, you're sure you're probably looking at the 8th or something.
Can you give that to Derek? You need one.
That's good, if that's the case, because the information I got, like, I think on Monday was this, they're only going to push it back one more week.
Well.
Yeah, I mean, you know, he's not going to make the thing anyway, so.
No, there'll just be, there'll be.
We can vote on him that night even, you know?
Yeah, exactly.
It's fine, we just read off our vote that night. Any other town business not anticipated in 48 hours? Tony?
No, sir.
Mary?
Nope.
Patrick?
Nope.
Either.
Nope.
Town administrators report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, on Monday, I attended the municipal conference over in Worcester. It was interesting to see, Governor Baker was there, Lieutenant Governor, and it reminded me a lot of, over the last four years, what we've seen. They visited, the Lieutenant Governors visited all thrifted 351 communities, yes, even Gosnold.
At least once.
At least once. It's been, it's been very good seeing the, the state and the administration working with the, the communities. Before, it felt like we were an island in southeastern Mass., and nobody came to, so between, if, I was looking back at the grants we've, we've applied for, have received, these are all new, new grants and processes that they've put together, so, you know, it was really, it was good to hear and actually see and remind us how, how positive things have been moving forward, and that we actually have a voice in this Commonwealth now.
They actually, yeah.
Yeah, I just, I just got a text. Please have Alan use the microphone, we can't hear him.
You're better off that way.
That's right.
Now, we're being stalked because of you.
There was also some nice seminars on economic development and such, so it was, it was worthwhile, I got to see our, our good friend Jay Ash, who we spent some time with, so it was very nice. We were approached a couple months ago by Wareham Youth Soccer Club, and they're looking to utilize Westfield. The fields are not utilized by the Wareham Girls' Softball Association. Wareham, first of all, Wareham Girls' Softball Association wants some there, but, well, they've done a fantastic job. They also are looking forward to having this group at the, that location as well, so they've presented some plans. You know, being, being good bureaucrats, we, we digested them, and, you know, we were trying to figure out how to make it work. It was running a couple, couple roadblocks, and engaged with Selectman Tropiano, and he was able to work with us, and not only that, he, he has a bit of a long memory there, so.
Like an elephant.
So, he brought up that not only was Westfield passed at town meeting for, for the original plans, but also when the CPC passed a separate town meeting article for the fields as well, and this is essentially already put together. It's passed town meeting twice, if you will. And this is, that, bringing that information, having those backup documents have made it a lot easier, so.